Hey, everyone, can you hear us?
So.
Yes.
We don't, we convene.
We are.
At.
Six thirty four.
Six thirty four. J C K A K and C and. J J.
No, because you can't do J J.
Yeah.
John James. Yeah.
A little additional. So, okay, we're convene. Talk to the planning board chair. One meeting, because I, in reviewing this, there was, there's not a reference in text. The geographic limit of what we're proposing. What we've been talking about with these amendments was the, was Lower Main Street. Always basically the New Hampshire town line at the river up to. Two thirty six. That was always the intent. In talking with Bill. He'd gotten together back in July and put together a, an attachment. It was a map of some sort, so I'm just gonna just go back on the way back machine.
Is, so that's at the B one zone?
My, my, my.
Easily to reinforce that now, but. The.
Yeah, I just tried to see if I got something. Oh.
I wasn't allowed to watch people.
This is not it. But.
The coordinates of the overlay, and he spoke specifically, you don't feel like the overlay is properly defined?
It doesn't, it's not mentioned in words.
Okay.
You, unless I'm like this.
Um, I just saw the change in the closest. Point of geographical point of the property line to the closest property line of the next, yeah.
That's, I'm fine with that.
And it's restricted to the B one zone.
Yeah, but we, we, it was gonna be a subset of B one.
Yeah.
Which was gonna be, what I'll outline right here. Which was gonna be. This B one. Here. I just. Outlined and yellow.
Yes.
Goes from Main Street down to the, to the state line.
Right.
You know, for this.
Mm hmm. So we've got here.
So there's, but there is a, an attachment, I think we have to check with David Galbraith as to where, in what file or where that might be stored. So that's just a piece of business that.
Okay.
Is not in front of us tonight, but we should have in time for the public hearings.
Yeah, really specifics.
Yeah.
Yeah, the map, yeah.
Well, this, yeah, this. It, it's, it's.
I think there is a map, but.
This, this segment of the B one zone.
I remember it being in a P D act that Bill had at one of our meetings.
Yeah, it definitely exists.
It exists, okay.
So we just need to aligning what we're, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Overlay map.
Did you see what I, could you read it? Right.
Yeah, okay.
See, young street, up here above the street.
Yeah, just that western area.
Just this down here, from the intersection up here down to.
Main Street, yeah. Outside of.
So that was that. Um. Gotta thank staff, Jennifer. You and the rest of you staff. Who's in my right pocket, who's in my left today?
Yes, exactly.
Able to do the formatting. So I was looking at it and I was telling them a big story before about. I printed everything out to my phones, my little H P printer at my desk. But it doesn't, I didn't have the thing flipped up to catch the pages.
Oh.
Caught some of them. No, it was on the floor, but I tried to put them together. The pages were numbered and all the fonts and bolds were all.
Okay.
Not right, and so I couldn't get from home to first to second to third, to last to home with it. And so. I, I, I sent off a note to Jennifer today at noon time.
Yeah.
Took a crack at it, so thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, very well.
That's short notice.
Yeah.
Um, so. Beyond that, we have a memo from the, the planning board. Did everybody read that?
Yes.
You see that? Okay, so. The late breaking news that we gave to the planning board before their public hearing. On the first. Was to put a, your takeaway, M S P, the I. Uh, and also to add. A section N.
Yes, N.
And then consistently taking the. Uh, making N in the, in the I one zone. It was appropriate, and, and they speak to this in the memo, to remove language. Uh, it's used to be located with the I ones, the setbacks should be minimum five hundred feet. So that's, doesn't make sense anymore because there's nothing there.
Right.
Other than that, the, the N. Uh, section was, was, was by the planning board and. Therefore, item B, the recommended final ordinance, now read setbacks from schools. Don't give a, no caregiver retail stores may be allowed within feet of any existing public or private school. Distance between property shall be calculated by direct measurement and straight line between the nearest property boundary of the school. To the nearest property line on which the caregiver re, or is. Is. Or.
Store is.
I think we, we, we take out. The plural on stores, right?
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
On the. Based upon. Based upon the impact of neighboring areas, the planning board may restrict the number of shifts and/or the hours of operation. That was a, another question I had. Uh, the planning board chair. It was a quick call and, um, just to test, to see if, uh. There were any hours of operation stipulated for the three stores that have been approved so far. And it was basically just one of the, the text of.
Regular business owners.
Regular for the, for other businesses in the area, paraphrased.
Right.
Uh, so that's, uh, but the fact is. Unless these businesses change. This is, this is it. So they're, they're approved, they're, you know, so. Any, any change in hours of operation, language in the ordinance wouldn't affect these, uh, these, we're just gonna prove.
Okay.
They're in. Okay, so. So that's, that's the recommendation from the planning board.
And just for those who didn't have the email, John James couldn't attend tonight, but he's in full support of the planning board's recommendations.
Yeah.
Just to share that publicly.
So I guess following along with this.
Overlay map.
It's not an overlay map, it's a B one segment map. B one zone. There should be a reference to that in here somewhere, I believe.
The operating north?
Well.
The map.
No, the map.
Oh.
Should be referenced as an attachment. The section one forty dash fifty seven dot one.
There is a note.
Yeah, the asterisk.
Where do you see that?
Right underneath where it talks about the, what zones, A, B, A.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Notice a lot within the B one caregiver overlay district.
Oh, I said it correctly, I said it correctly. Position includes all B one properties currently within Lower Main Street from Bourbon Road to Russell's border as a dog in the west. That, that.
I thought that that captured it.
Thank you.
If we wanna add a map, just for clarity, for, I'm fine with that, because we've heard that map and all looked at that map. But it's not necessary.
I guess, I guess we could put in parentheses after district and before the period. We could say, uh, appended.
Okay. Um, does it?
What do you think?
I agree with that. Does it make sense? I'm just thinking, we're just obviously looking at one row here of table A. And there's multiple other uses listed there. I feel like caregiver retail stores should be listed there with like an asterisk to refer people not to the note. Because this new B one caregiver overlay district is only gonna be applicable to caregiver retail stores, it's not gonna be applicable to. Anything, any, any other use, yeah.
And the asterisk after stores.
Yeah, just like a.
That's good, most even. I have notes, if you wanna go through that, uh, you wanna go through.
Do you have any notes, Jack, where you disagree with the planning board's recommendation?
I do.
Or you wanna tweak it?
I wanna tweak.
Okay, then we need to hear that.
Okay. Uh. Okay, let's go to. Performance standards. One forty dash sixty seven dot one. Performance standards for caregiver retail stores, and we go down to. First one I have is.
What letter?
E. E. Four. One. No, E four A one. This one has, the ones in brackets, and it shows security surveillance cameras.
Yeah.
Um, thinking back to watching Paul's rules that were not enacted by O N P. Uh, and there was some. Discussion, a lot of discussion actually, about. Surveillance cameras in general. How it was viewed as onerous for caregivers, meaning. In. In home care as opposed to registered caregivers, which is a more business. And they, one of the things they wanted to do was to have the footage or the video. Recordings, um, maintain the, there it is. Is, do we feel as though we need to have stipulate how long the records need to be kept?
Well, the state, if the state hunted that and they're gonna review it again next year. And see what municipality rules they're gonna grant. That didn't go through last time. If the state says something, we have to abide by it. So if they, if they add more.
Yeah.
It will automatically be applied to, does that make sense? So we don't need to, we don't need to stipulate what perhaps you know that those rights didn't go through.
This is more of a construction language thing rather than making people do stuff. But just, if, if we're gonna have them video record. How long is the loop? Before it writes over itself, I mean, you could have. You know, a twenty four hour loop, seven day loop, uh, you know, because it just keeps.
Chances are a twenty four hour loop is not gonna help you much.
Well, that's, so it's not, I don't wanna get hung up on thirty days, I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying, do we need to? Make that suggestion?
I would wanna know what other towns are doing, if the state already had problems finding it onerous to this business. I would be, I would wanna see.
These, these were, like, these were caregivers and registered caregivers, not stores.
Okay, okay.
Difference.
Okay.
The people who were up and out about it were, were the, the caregivers, because, you know, they're, you know.
Smaller.
They're vending to people in the household. As opposed to the registered caregivers who are, who have qualified patients that are coming with cards. So.
The state was concerned with looking at this just for care, like in home care, it was not for stores, and they hunted this issue from that, right? They, they weren't discussing this issue from a store, so.
It's my recollection, though, I think, I think this was like, uh, this is one detail of many, 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 many details of what these rules were. And our proposed rules and. And, and the legislature pulled back that authority so that they wanna have the authority to. To, uh. But again, I don't wanna get hung up on the particular number of days. But just, do we need to, and as, if you're gonna record something. Uh, you know, how long do we keep? What should it be available? And, uh, so if there was a problem. I guess, and someone might report the theft. And again, we don't need to have that announced tonight. Perhaps that's something the police department could.
Okay.
Make a recommendation or say, okay, we would.
I think it's helpful to have it on.
Ten days.
Yeah.
Two days.
I would.
I agree with you, twenty four hours seems, they might not even know what's going.
Right.
Before it's actually recorded.
I think if you get to get the input from the police department, I think, just from my perspective, if I own a business. It's to my advantage to keep track of that. Like, because if somebody were to break in, the chances of catching that person, recovery to the dock is much greater if I have the footage. Like, like, to me, this is sort of like, I, I'm not opposed to putting specifics in there of like a requirement, whatever. But I also, in a way, sort of see this as like a duh, like, if they're recording, like, if I own a business, I should be motivated to be keeping track of that information. So if something does happen, I have the footage to protect. That's prevention, yeah, that's privacy, but still. I went in sight, that's a good point to raise, but.
And, and then we wasn't, I have to be frank, listening to that, I sat in for eight hours on the testimony. And, um, there, on that piece of it, again, on the caregiver piece. It was item cost.
Yes.
To, it, it might be a bigger and more robust system that someone will have to purchase as opposed to something else for a shorter. Shorter time. Anyway, that was, that was one thing, and I came up with, it's still a question mark. I'm a very P D, perhaps, question mark. And.
And I would wanna know if other towns have, have done that in their ordinances.
By. By next Tuesday, when we have the public hearing, you know, we all should look it up.
Okay.
Um, 'cause I think.
Yes.
It's up to us right now. You're too busy.
Yeah, we'll find out, there's a lot going on, okay.
Okay, so. Sorry, point to that.
That's okay.
It's a double pointer, okay, that's me too. Um, okay, now, the other one, going down to exterior lighting under, let's see, where are we, E?
Just, just down three paragraphs, right, from where we are.
Four, four brackets, uh, some things, uh. Exterior lighting that illuminates the exterior walls of premise complies with practical provision of code ordinances. And. And. I don't know what comes after and, but perhaps it meant something like cutoff fixtures without glare or illumination. Cut off fixtures mean a, a light that's, that doesn't shine sideways, just downlit. Wasn't, that was another thing that I, but it might also be.
And, number five.
Well, that's what and is, that's, okay, I think.
It's the list.
I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything, I was going back to.
I was just doing it straight, and what?
And, yeah, but it seems weird though, because the and isn't after the previous three, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So either we.
Because it's the last one, yeah, the last one.
Oh, yeah, separated by.
Yeah, so, um. One is blue, one forty, twenty seven. Forty twenty seven. That's a sign. I guess I'm thinking about makes. People choose to put, uh, soft lighting in. Be mounted under the, the flat part under that little triangle sticks out. And so it's downlit. It will raise the exterior, but it doesn't, doesn't go across the property.
I know.
So that's just another, I guess I'm looking for language on that. Appropriate. Other than that, all I had was, uh, was just formatting things.
In each, all signage and advertising, that's page four of seven. In the middle, as may amended regarding sign.
Station.
As, okay.
As may be amended, right?
I'm writing on the storyboard.
Amendment. I would say state statutes, if amended.
Yeah, amended, yeah.
May.
Where is that again, I'm sorry, page four, each.
You have your choice. Bread and butter, pizza, burgers, tacos, or soup.
You're in a bag.
Just to amend it. Started, probably don't, some areas.
Think that they're gonna end early.
Um, Ron or Alita, can you guys both meet? Else. Thanks. Do we need a motion to approve or?
No action to be taken.
Yeah, okay. This is just to prep the draft for next week for the public hearing, okay?
No.
For those few minor changes, and then we need to get this posted.
And add the map.
And we're not putting fees in?
Fees aren't listed in. Fees are under the licensing section.
I thought they were under like two thousand and.
Yep, number two on N.
Yeah, that's one where, uh.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure, like, for the public hearing, we. Put those in red or whatever.
For input?
Or? Yeah, for input, I wanna, I, I'd like to do a little bit more research on the fees, 'cause I think neighboring towns don't. Charge that much, charge that much for a store, if I remember, for a storefront. Okay. Just, just like, maybe it was a placeholder. Okay. I, I certainly, I think, from my perspective, a different, you know, a larger fee for new versus a renewal, I think, stands. But I'll try to do.
But I'll try to do some research.
On the three thousand.
Yeah, I didn't show it all together.
Okay.
I have them, like, all buried in emails and stuff.
Yeah.
Then again, I, I looked up, um, some of the rules. Um, and, uh. For the application, you know, following the definition of caregiver retail store. Um. And then the third line is that is used by a registered caregiver. Registered caregiver is. Um. Is defined. Um, I think it's in. Uh, twenty-two. And, uh, say, section twenty-four, twenty-five of lane. Uh, makes the distinction between. Caregiver and a, uh. So, but in there, it talks about all the. Other stuff that an individual has to do. It's not narrow. And this, I think that was intent. For, like, background checks and all of those, those things are already done.
Yeah, the state.
I know this is all ground. We talked about this back in January of two thousand twenty. But, uh. I just wanna, like.
Yep.
Refresh my memory a little bit, so I think that's all taken care of. By the fact that anybody who operates a retail store is in fact registered.
Yes.
Yeah, the, um. In section N, the applicant has to provide evidence to the council that they've gotten land use approvals from the, the planning board. Um. There's an actual application, application B, and they must provide a copy of their state license application applicable and supporting documentation. Um, evident, evidence of all state approvals. Which, you know, they should have already gone through those practices.
Yeah.
And then just basically are providing us documentation.
Good.
How could it not be applicable? Just to get a little picky here, um.
Where are I have?
In the N three. A. A copy of the applicant's state license. Application, if applicable. They have to be licensed by the state.
Yeah.
So I, you know, we get that thing redundant. We can just cross out if applicable. It must be licensed by the state to operate.
Okay, so this is gonna be.
N three, A.
He's trying to.
N three, A. And.
And there's some comments that you know.
Yeah.
That's almost insinuating that they don't need a license, which is kind of.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So the license that is article shall be denied to the following persons. He is a person who's got a license for a caregiver retail store of a local town, see.
Yeah.
And an applicant is not required by unnecessary state approvals and other local approvals prior to issues, insurance, and license. So we can revoke. I was just trying to find that, what you were talking about. There was an exterior protection feature. We talked about exterior lighting.
I think lighting might be its own. Have its own, uh, chapter. Yeah.
So you can search it online. Yeah, it's so much easier. Yeah. I don't know if that works. There's a section on the layer.
That's, that font is, it text about signs. Personal.
One forty dash twenty-seven, letting me use for service security, safety, and, uh, the operator lighting fixtures shall be shared.
And where is that?
Um, this is, um. One forty dash twenty-seven.
Okay, that's glare.
I searched for the word lighting.
Okay, yeah, so, one forty dash twenty-seven.
The other one, one forty dash fifty-two point one. So that's a question. Oh, yeah, it is.
Okay, but.
All exterior lighting should.
I think the glare works on it because this is actually a security or safety operation.
Except for security. Lighting shall be terminated at nine P M.
Yeah, so, um.
Not the way it is not adjacent to properties or sheets in other ways.
I think, I think the section one forty dash twenty-seven. Uh. Just putting it in here cuz everyone asked the question, you know.
And that, this is one forty dash twenty-seven, it's applicable to all uses.
Right. That's clear. Okay. So anything else on, um. For our review of the proposed amendments to one forty dash sixty-seven dot one? Caregiver retail stores.
Nope.
Okay, conclude that then, uh. What else? We've got kind of a round, round of this now, and it's the last thing we're. It's what we're gonna talk about next, and, uh. I guess I'm still not exactly clear. But the extra thing.
So Abby and I are gonna be working together over the next week to bring a draft charge. To our meeting next week for the council to review. And that charge will include.
Hours of operation and canopy size.
It's around performance standards.
Yep.
For registered caregivers growing in their own homes. And licensing for registered caregivers growing in their own.
With emphasis on. Hours of operation and canopy size to specifically tackle the issues that we've been consistently hearing about. That should be all. And of course, the planning board is open to. Add to that, but we have made specific note and know that things could be fixed with these two. Things focused on in performance standards.
And this will follow along probably as, uh, as we discussed with fiber glass meeting could be.
In a purview.
One, one sixty-seven. So.
It would be any section.
One swap, one, section one forty dash sixty-seven. Dot two.
What, whatever comes next, like.
Well, sixty is already used. That's the problem. So kind of, so we're getting into suffixes.
I'm fine with the suffixes. Yeah, whatever. I just think the language needs to be.
It just needs to be there. The hours of operation is gonna. Hopefully eliminate some issues.
But if they're all kind of glom together. That's, makes it easier for whoever follows us.
Well, yeah, in terms of putting all these.
Go from, that was one of the huge things. With Shoreland, when we got forced to put in our own chapter one ten.
Mm-hmm.
We already had it all. We had it. And they made us, you know, separate it out, mistake it. And, uh, and so now we have requirements and not, nothing one, one forty tells you necessarily go there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's, let's make it as clean and easy and possible. So we have currently, like, what we're talking about tonight, we have one forty dash sixty-seven dot one. Is performance standards for caregiver retail stores. We just approved. Um, one forty sixty-seven dot two.
Okay.
Medical kit, medical. So then I feel like we need another section that is then, um. Read, I think it probably makes sense that we define a registered caregiver home occupation and then we have our section of performance.
We have to add a definition.
Yeah, yeah, that, like, that's a, that's a big part of our charge. And so. What this, to me, what this ordinance would include is Abby mentioned. Operating hours, putting a restriction on this, the canopy size, so that we can't have the. Example of use forever and ever of my family and I all smashing together and using our barns to.
She's not old enough to.
Well, you know, you know, got a few years, but. Lining ahead.
We're gonna alert you.
To prevent. To prevent that type of situation from happening. Um, I think there should also be performance standards in there around older, much like we've got in. Um. Our other ordinances, you know, just covering all of our bases there. And then we've sort of set this pattern forth of. Creating a new ordinance section, uh, where we're defining the performance standards for that particular use, and then we're also addressing licensing. So I feel like that's the pattern we set forth. So we need to create a new section, including performance standards for this home, registered caregiver home occupation, then also a section to license. And that's what I'm drafting now.
And that falls under everything that Phil sent us the email on. As well, right?
Um, refresh my memory on Phil.
The subject says a couple of questions. I got his answer on Thursday, August twenty-sixth. I believe that's more different.
Yeah, I definitely saw it. I'm just trying to. I don't do a very good job of keeping my inbox.
I know, August twenty-sixth, here we go, couple of questions. So, number two. I just wanna make sure that we're. Number one is fireworks.
Yeah, so we can't, we can regulate caregivers, um, we can't prohibit or limit the number of caregivers, uh, but we could limit the growing area. Um, which I think is what we intend to do, um.
Hours of operations.
Yep.
Yeah, we can limit the number of legally non-registered. Challenge, I know, no, strike up. Yeah, we need to create a new use. And create performance standards for it.
Yeah, it's just drafting still in my brain. It hasn't come out of paper yet.
I'll have a very rough draft version of that for us to rip apart and destroy next Tuesday. Or fall in love with.
And I would say for the purposes of, like, what we're gonna be pulling together for the planning board. The, the area that we would like for them to focus on is the performance standards piece and the licensing piece is solely our responsibility.
Correct.
But they will smoosh together into one final product.
Um. Okay. I'm clearing now.
We're in problem solving right now.
So we need to make sure we have that as an agenda item.
Yes.
For next week. And we'll have something to review.
What, what was the date of Phil's? Or are the date you forward to him?
August twenty-sixth, Thursday.
Nine thirteen A M.
Number two. Same can limit growing size. And the number of caregivers who operate on a lot. In that, those two things right there.
Okay, this is on the moratorium, then.
No, this is not the moratorium.
I thought someone said it was attached to.
Well, number three.
The second line is forward, couple of questions.
Okay, you, you mentioned. Uh, can we restrict reach critical caregivers? Question from you to Phil.
Yeah, and then.
There's none.
Response from that particular one.
Okay, that's a separate response then?
That, yeah, that's his answer to my question.
But the email is coming from Jennifer.
I can read it, yeah, the part, okay, number two, while the law does not allow municipalities.
While it does allow.
Oh, geez, I got three hours, wasn't it? Okay. Oh, wow, uh, while, while the law does allow municipalities to regulate caregivers generally, municipalities cannot prohibit or prohibit or limit the number of caregivers. In my view, this is our town attorney, the town could limit the growing area and or number of registered caregivers who operate on a lot. But it would be more challenging to limit the number of legally non-registered caregivers.
Yes.
Under me, under the main medical use of marijuana law, two non-registered caregivers who are members of the same household. Or family are allowed to share the same cultivation area. And there are other such limitations for non-registered caregivers, including cultivating a few plants per patient. And he goes in the specifics. So our ordinance could make a distinction for registered caregivers as it does currently. So I wanna follow through and ask the planning board then, in this charge. To create performance standards for. For this new business.
So we, we'll read a draft next week.
Very draft.
Of a draft.
And, and then it'll be. We'll.
Tweet.
We'll work on it and likely the action will be subsequent to next week.
Probably.
Get it. Get into our, our funding form.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. And there's no timeline on it. This is just specifically trying to solve some of the issues that.
I saw it, cuz, uh. Well, there is no timeline. Time is kind of the essence.
It is.
Yeah, this is something I would like to move on as quickly as we can. But on the agenda.
It, yeah, no. What?
I just feel like a cat, you know, can't. The, the linoleum floor can't pick up stuff.
I don't get. That's good.
Okay, um.
And we're unanimous, which is nice when we all are in agreement on, on things. So it's nice that we're all in agreement on. Moving into the, uh. That you're in the public hearing.
Yeah.
Chuck, you had mentioned hours of operation. Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's what I talked to Bill about. I don't know if you're out of the room or not really, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But I, uh. I called it and see if that came up on the three approvals that have been granted so far.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh. Kind of put him on the spot. So, yeah, his recollection was that, that there was that stipulation. Uh, but.
It just said.
But, but basically, we're, we're at the. At a point where.
Similar.
There won't, there won't be any other uses like this. With, with the proposed amendments. Any others. So it would just be these particular businesses as they may be. Operated or sold or. Transferred or whatever.
That actually just sent, that's, sorry, helped me thinking. So I did watch back the planning board. Public hearing from last week, and they were talking about the term, like, similar, similar establishments. And I think. At one point, Bill and. Jeff kind of opined on how, like, their interpretation of similar establishments, and they sort of were, like, ever sort of saying, well, my interpretation is like a similar establishment to. You know, ingrained is, we Frank, because they're both restaurants. So it's like looking to another similar business to establish operating hours. So does that mean that. Registered caregiver retail stores will look to each other to define operating hours? And so then who sets the precedent, right? Who, who sets the standard?
That was kind of like.
Yeah. That was.
My, my looking, I was looking for specialists.
Yeah.
And, uh. And uh. Because they're. All pharmaceutical. They they they, you know. Selling it uh. A medical product. There's no other medical product seller. In the stipulated zone. You couldn't go to like the pharmacy, you know, it's out. It isn't.
Yes. Yep. So given how specific what we have here is, and we have such a specific. Zone in which we're now going to be allowing these. Do you think we should put in specific a specific window of operation that jives with the the hours in which businesses downtown are open?
I would love it if. Uh anybody listening in tonight. Or anybody that they may speak with who has knowledge of these sorts of things would 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 opine.
Yeah.
That, well, I think. We go through this election. So if you want to be open at five o'clock in the morning, some twenty-four hours, some people say, okay, no, eight, eight.
I did look at some of the surrounding towns, you know, starting with this is uh. And they opened up anywhere between seven A M. and ten A M. And they closed anywhere between six and nine.
Yeah.
Right. So. It wasn't crazy hours, but.
I think that well, that's been brought up.
Can I interject?
About um.
They can't.
Oh, great.
It's been brought up uh. About other. Registered caregivers in town. You know. Doing. Advertising and elimination and. And house of operation that are. Are vulnerable. Will do it for the night, if not if not the morning.
That's not a store.
Right.
That's a that's a registered caregiver which we're gonna tackle, yeah, with this plan.
All saying it's an issue. Has been brought up relative to the topic.
Okay.
Of of of.
Creating uniformity.
Yeah, so it's something that if uh. Just like every house gets sold, every business gets sold. I mean, whether they get. You know, swallowed up uh all nature's way, that's all. Uh so we've all that all happened. So while everything is might be fine. With the operations we have going right now. Well, if someone else comes in, they might be more aggressive. And so we need, I think, the necessary teeth to say, no. This is probably. And and we have the ability to do that. But we want to be reasonable. So it's that's why I was saying in my own notes, I wrote seven eight to seven P question mark. Eight eight to eight P question mark. What is?
Yeah, that's more than reasonable.
And so we're into like having some level on it. So it's not open to a lot of.
I would definitely say I would want to put a. Kind of cap on like no later than, no earlier, like open no earlier than, open no later than a particular time. That we sort of deem appropriate for the downtown area, you know, whatever, whatever that is, eight P or nine P M. I mean, none of the businesses there are open. What's the latest anybody's open? I don't even know.
It would be the restaurants, right?
Yeah.
The latest.
Yeah.
And even that, I mean.
Even that's a little late.
Then then this is a push. As far as.
Like nine thirty. Yeah. Yeah, so like I think I hear what you're saying, Jack. I think. It'd be great to get some input and stuff on that, but I I do think. I feel like this whole similar establishments within the zone thing could. In the future burn us potentially because we we have set no, we've set no.
Precedent.
Precedent or requirement for any like if if and and you know, one of the existing stores were to close and then something that opens up an opportunity for a new one to come in. There's no.
Framework.
There's no framework here for for operating hours.
Um. We do have. I'm open to hearing a comment just because we've been talking now about um finding out from folks what they think. Is acceptable and to opine to us. We do have Ron, who is the owner of um. Zee Living, I believe, on the call right now. Can we ask him about?
Oh, just keep it with us at the workshop level.
Okay.
And we can get that input next week.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yes. So we'll ask specifically about our hours of operation next week. For storefronts.
Yeah.
Okay. Hours of storefronts because hours of operation of caregivers is something. Is it separately separate? Uh but okay, we want to create uniformity in our main street.
And you know, this this kind of responsibility. With construction of language where. The uh. Entity creating language. Should be clear. Um so that way there's not going to get into vagaries. Later on. And then, because the way it works. Is that the entity didn't have the opportunity to write it. In some things in their favor. That's how that's how it works. You can't penalize someone because you work there. Uh so it works in contracts and. Some of the things like that. So I just I just I just I think this is good and good. I like what you're talking about. With respect to no earlier than the later.
Yeah, because then we don't, we're not boxing them in.
Right, right. Anything else? Okay, we're out at uh seven thirty, seven twenty-five.